...of Monday, November 6, 2017. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. First item up is the Order of Business. Is there anything on the Order of Business that we need to discuss? Or are there any changes, Mr. Kessel?
President Decker, I have no suggested changes to the Order of Business.
There are no changes to the Order of Business. I would look for a motion to approve the Order of Business.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Order of Business is approved. Consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda, commissioners, you would like to discuss?
Make motion to approve the consent agenda?
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
In a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Consent agenda is approved. We have three timetable items tonight, starting at 4:50. So we'll move into the non-timetable agenda. First thing up is the Administration and Finance Criminal Code Updates. Attorney Kreip.
Mr. Chair, the ordinances are 1644 to consider first, and then 1645 is regarding Chapter 25. These are a second reading of the ordinance changes proposed by City Prosecutor Wanko at our last meeting. Nothing has changed since the first reading.
Any questions for City Attorney Kreip? I have a question. Commissioner Altman's, did you have a public hearing?
We did.
Okay. For both of these?
Yep.
Okay. So, there's no questions for Attorney, City Attorney Kreip? I guess I would look for, we'll have to pass these separately, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I'd look for a motion to either approve or disapprove the changes.
Move to approve secondary and final pass of ordinance number 1644.
Okay, we have a motion to approve 1644.
Second.
In a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. 1644 is approved. Next up is changes to Chapter 25. And this is 1645? Am I correct?
Yep.
That's correct.
Any questions for Ms. Kreip on 1645?
I'd make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve 1645.
Second.
In a second. Any further questions or comments on 1645? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. 1645 is approved. Next up, we have the HR Manual, ordinance number 1637, City Attorney Kreip.
Mr. Chair, this is the second reading of ordinance number 1637, which is the changes to the HR Manual that were reviewed by the Civil Service Commission, representatives of the city staff, and then there were some changes which caused the delay between the first reading, which was several months ago, and, and the reading that we attempted to have in October, but we wanted a full commission given the question being asked by the staff. Civil Service and the staff went through and agreed on all the changes that are presented in the draft. That's in your packet. There is one change that the city staff had asked for that Civil Service decided they weren't equipped to render an opinion on because there's a potential financial impact. And so, they said they were fine either way, but they wanted to leave it up to, to you with, with your ability to consult with city staff on the financial impact. So under Section 18.9, the change would be that, that's the special benefits for retirees, and right now, it's any city employee who is 62 years old, or is at least 55, and has completed 25 years of service, is eligible to receive a benefit for their health insurance costs following retirement. It's up to 2% per year of employment, up to 50% total. So even if you're 62 and you worked 30 years, you'd only get up to 50% of your premium reimbursed. The reimbursement is based on the actual cost, but it can't exceed what 50% of the city's plans would be. The pension plans for city employees allow anyone who has completed 30 years of service, regardless of their age, to draw their pension. And so, there's a possibility that someone who has completed 30 years of service with the city might not be 55, would be able to draw their pension, but would be ineligible to receive the health insurance benefit. And so what city staff are asking is that it be amended as is depicted in the memo, which would say, any full-time city employee who is 62 years old, who is at least 55, and has completed 25 years of service, or has completed 30 years of service and retired from the city, is eligible for this health insurance reimbursement benefit.
Any questions for Ms. Kreip? Or city staff?
And that's until the age 65, correct?
I'm sorry, Mr. Commissioner Fenner?
The medical insurance until the age 65?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Until they become, if they pass away or become eligible for Medicare. Yep.
If they pass away, we would still carry the spouse? Correct.
Question for Mr. Kessel.
I do have a comment while Attorney Kreip is looking that up. We have other changes that we'd like to see on this section specifically of the code. It'd be my recommendation that you not act on this portion of it at all. And then when we bring back those other revisions, we can include these, but it's, it's probably better to see it in the full context of those changes rather than adopting something and then piecemealing something back later. So that'd be my specific recommendation, is to wait with that portion of the HR manual. You, you are implement, if you approve tonight, you're approving with an implementation date of January 1st. So we do have some time to make the changes to this specific area and bring it back to you and implement the changes on that same day.
And that would just be an amendment to what we approve?
Correct. Correct. And it's just specific to the health benefit that we're talking about now.
On the years of service, have you had a chance, it was brought up to me the other day, of how we deal with employees that worked here for a certain amount of time, left, came back? How did their years work? You know, they worked five, gone a couple, come back and get 25 more years in? Are they at 30, or are they at 25?
Commissioner Altman's, there's, there's specifics to every scenario.
Right.
And so I'm not sure exactly which one you're speaking to. I know of an instance where that's happened, actually in two different occasions. One is a city staff member, and one is actually a park staff member eligible for similar type benefits with retirement. So without knowing exactly the one you're speaking to, I can't give a more precise answer. But I'd happy to talk with you after and go through the specifics.
Mr. Kessel, do we know offhand how many employees this actually would apply to?
I don't know that answer right off the top of my head, President Decker. That is something that we can find out, that was part of the research that I think you as a commission need to know before you'd vote on what has been presented to you tonight. The amendment that I'm speaking to, our language is a little bit vague with regards to eligibility. So it currently allows staff to take a family medical plan, even though they may be a single person. So we may end up reimbursing more than what would be required because the ordinance language is, is just, it's not specific enough to disallow that kind of action from taking
Any other questions for Mr. Kessel or Ms. Kreip?
Well, we had delayed taking action on this at our last meeting just because we wanted everyone to hear. It sounds like there's still a few more things to ferret out. Would you be able to have that done by the next meeting?
You know, I, I'm certainly just fine with you adopting the ordinance as it's presented minus that specific section of the code, and then us bringing something back, just so this is off. I know this has been a long time coming. The staff has been waiting for a long time as well. I would give them some comfort to know that this will be completed. We just completed benefit signup, so if you want to table it, that's certainly within your power to do so.
Let's table the whole thing again. We might as well table the whole thing again, no sense in piecemealing it this time.
Would that delay the implementation in January? Mr. Kessel?
That's when the document language, I believe, currently says, is, all these changes will take effect in January. So we will double down and make sure that we bring to you a document that you can take second reading on then at the next city commission meeting.
And did, the last meeting, Mr. Altman, did, did you have a public hearing? Or no public hearing, you just tabled? So we'll still have to have a public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I think you had the public hearing at the first reading in June.
Okay, okay.
If you wanted to do another public hearing, you certainly could, given those changes, but you wouldn't have to.
All right. Well, I guess then, I guess, from what I'm hearing is commissioners would like to table this, so, till the next meeting.
Motion for that?
Yes.
A motion that we table it until the next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to table the approval of the HR Manual till the next meeting.
So move.
And we have a second. Any further discussion or questions for staff? We'll vote. Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye to table this. Next up, Mr. Kessel, City Attorney.
Thank you, President Decker. What you have before you is a offer letter that was created for our top candidate for our city, our most recent interviews for our city attorney position. Janelle and Murtha is the candidate that rose to the top of the list after all of the reviews and interviews. You have a copy of the offer letter itself, the resume, and her application. It was also provided to you in a, a separate email prior to the commission packet. In addition to the information you've been provided, I was also informed today by HR Coordinator Nominak that she has passed her background check, her drug check, and all of the other reviews that we do ancillary to a job offer. The offer we have made is contingent upon city commission approval. So you can see the terms laid out for you in the offer letter. I believe it falls within the interest and, and comments that the city's commission has made in previous attempts to hire a city attorney. So it is the recommendation of the hiring group that Ms. Murtha be offered the position of city attorney per the terms in the offer letter before you.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any questions for Mr. Kessel? Hearing no questions, I would look for a motion to either approve the offer or deny the offer to Ms. Murtha.
Move to approve the offer.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the offer to Mrs. Murtha with a second. Any further comments or questions for staff? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Mr. Kessel? So we have approved the offer to the city attorney. Next up are some reports from Mr. Kessel.
Did you want to do the Job Development Authority appointment?
Oh, yes, yes. I know Mr. Steiner is looking forward to it.
The County Jobs Development Authority is seeking an appointment to their board. They meet three different times a year. They meet on a quarterly basis, but they take the summers off. Currently, Commissioner Steiner is the delegate and appointed person to that position. I have communicated with Commissioner Steiner, and he would like to stay on that board and be reappointed for another term. So it is our recommendation that the city commission appoint Commissioner Steiner to another term to the County Job Development Authority.
No move.
Second.
All right, we have the nomination of Commissioner Steiner to the Dickinson City Job Development Authority Committee, and we have a second. Have any questions or comments? Mr. Steiner, any comments?
Nope.
All right. So we'll go ahead and vote on the appoint, reappointment of Mr. Steiner to the committee. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Abstain.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Approve to be reappointed to the Dickinson City Jobs Committee. All right, do we have enough time for your report, Mr. Kessel?
Yes, I will make sure that it comports with our timeframe.
Okay.
So the city of Dickinson recently was privileged to host the Energy Development Transition, Transmission Committee. You should all have a report of the documents that was provided to that group. Commissioner Friedrich and Altman's attended a conference in Bismarck, so they weren't able to attend. So, so this is what we talked about. We were very happy to have that group come to the city of Dickinson and host them here in our committee. We showed most of the investments that we've made from the revenue stream, from the gross production tax. Specifically, we showed them the Public Works Building, the Public Safety Center, the new wastewater reclamation facility. They did tour the new middle school. The, we also brought them here to City Hall. They heard presentations from a great many of city staff, but they also heard Airport Manager Kelly Braun speak. We also brought them out, and we had a bus that they toured in, and they actually were on our runway on that bus, just to show them what the physical, what it felt like to, to bounce along that airport. President Dr. Tom Mittsle also presented from DSU. Stark County Commission President Jay Elkin made a presentation, as did Superintendent Doug Sullivan, and Sean Gaddy from AE2S. So by all accounts, everything that I have heard from the results of that meeting is that it went very, very well. I specifically talked to Senator Rich Wardner, who chaired the committee, and he said that he heard from more than one person on the committee that they were impressed with the presentation and, and how it went. I will say that the formula changes that were presented by, by Mr. Wardner will have to be ironed out, but he did present at the WDEA meeting, which was held right after this, a new funding proposal for GPT revenue. And I'll, I'll go into that report after a little bit. But I just wanted the commission to be aware that I think the showing went well. I want to thank President Decker for being an active participant in the process. He spoke to the committee on more than one occasion. Also, Commissioner Trustum was there at the meal that we held on the first night, and so I, I think it went very, very well, and I was glad and happy to participate. And I'd look for comments from either Commissioner Trustum or President Decker if you'd like to augment the report in any way.
Well, I can begin. I was not able to attend the day meetings because I am a teacher. There's a lot of young faces in the crowd tonight, thanks to me. But it was, it was really great to sit down and have some real discussions about the future of Dickinson and how important these meetings are, and how important the continuation of that funding to Dickinson is. And I think that after some of the tours that they received, they really got to see it for themselves, which is really important.
I would, I would echo those comments, and I think that they, they saw that there's going to be continued need, not only from us as a city providing services, but also from our school districts, the airport, everything else that makes the city run. And I have heard nothing but good things also from, and I would just commend the staff. Did an amazing job. All the presentations were spot on, and I'm just really proud of them, just proud of the city, how we performed, so. And thank you again, Mr. Kessel, for kinda being the emcee of the whole event. Before you move on to your next report, I think we have a matter here at 4:50 that I'd like to attend to. And if I could have Mr. Nathan Steeg and Mr. Jaden Concha come up to the podium? Mr. Kessel, if you would.
I'll be happy to read. I'm going to read to you a report from the Carnegie Hero Fund Commission. This is available to you if you're interested at www.carnegiehero.org/nathan/michael-steeg and jaden charles concha. Nathan Michael Steeg and Jaden Charles Concha helped to rescue Edward Shapowski and attempted to help to rescue Frederick Iwanok from drowning in Mandary, North Dakota on February 20th, 2016. Shapowski, 58, was riding on his all-terrain vehicle when Iwanok, 60, on ice on Lake Sakakawea, when the ice broke beneath them, sending them into the frigid water. Unable to lift themselves onto the ice, Shapowski and Iwanok both screamed for help. Across the lake, an ice fisherman, Steeg, age 30, electrician from Dickinson, North Dakota, and his nephew Jaden, 14, student, also of Dickinson, heard the screams. Steeg, with Jaden, rode their all-terrain vehicle to a point about 30 feet from the hole created by the fall. He removed fishing equipment from the vehicle and moved the vehicle to a point about 10 feet from the hole. Jaden retrieved cable from a winch at the front of the vehicle and gave it to Steeg, who took the cable to a point about 6 feet from the hole, threw it towards Iwanok, but was unable to reach him. Steeg then broke through the ice, fully submerged and resurfaced. Seconds later, Jaden and the vehicle also broke through. Steeg aided Jaden out of the water and then got himself out. He directed Jaden to stay back on safer ice. Steeg returned to his equipment and secured a 5-foot piece of rope. He walked back to the hole, reaching the north end, and got down on his stomach and extended the rope toward Shapowski. By then, Iwanok had submerged. Shapowski moved along the ice until he could grasp the rope. Once he reached it, Steeg, holding the other end, pulled him partially out, then started to back away from the hole. Shapowski rolled his upper body onto the ice and climbed the rest of the way out. He stood up, and Steeg aided him in walking to Jaden, who assisted Shapowski to the bank. Steeg walked separately to the bank, and they met at his truck. Steeg and Jaden drove with Shapowski to a nearby home where they called 911. Shapowski was hospitalized two days for treatment of his injuries, and he recovered. Iwanok's body was recovered about six hours later, but he had drowned. Steeg was cold and nearly exhausted, and Jaden suffered bruising and a sprain to his right wrist. He later went to the doctor for treatment and recovered. In honor of your bravery and citizenship, President Decker, Mayor Decker, would like to present each of you with the Mayor's Commendation Award for your actions on that day.
You are a fine example of the citizens of Dickinson. Thank you. So, on behalf of all the citizens of Dickinson, we are very proud of you. So.
Would you like to say any words?
Thank you for coming tonight. It is an honor to present you with those accommodations, so, and thank you, Mr. Kessel, for reading their narrative provided by Carnegie Hero Fund. Next up, I guess we have a little bit of time between, to our next timetable. So, Mr. Kessel, if you could get the, your second report in?
Certainly, thank you, President Decker. The next report contains a discussion of our January meetings. Both the first and third meetings in January happen to be recognized holidays with the New Year and with Martin Luther King Day. So the city staff would like to recommend, rather than postponing those till Tuesday, we happen to have five Mondays in the month, and we'd recommend that we actually move them to the second and fourth Mondays, which would be the 8th and the 22nd respectively, as opposed to the 1st and 15th. And while we compiled this data, it has been suggested that our city commission meeting actually be moved from Mondays to Tuesdays on a more regular and/or permanent basis, with the objective of trying to avoid holidays such as the conflicts that we're seeing on, in January. So we put together the calendar in front of you that kinda shows when our meetings are currently scheduled, which would be in the green. The ones that are in mauve would be rescheduled dates due to conflicts with holidays. And the days that are in pink would suggest the new meeting days if you decided to move to Tuesdays instead of Mondays. So specifically, you have two different items in front of you. The first one is to consider moving simply January's days to the second and fourth, and then on a larger scale, to consider moving our Monday city commission meetings to Tuesdays. That would require, to change them to Tuesdays would require an ordinance change. So it's something that we would have to bring to you, and then you'd have to take two readings and have a public hearing on. The January changes would not. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them for you, but that would conclude my report.
Mr. Kessel, we could make the change if, if we wish to, on Tuesdays, make, make them effective February, since we're already moving, or?
President Decker, absolutely. We would write the ordinance to reflect that, and yes, we can make it them effective February 6th.
Okay, so we'll tackle one item at a time. We'll look at January, and I would...
Mr. President, I would, if, you know, we're looking at the holidays in January, I think July would be another month where we could see some potential people absent for that third meeting. So that would be, or excuse me, second. So I would like to see possibly a shift of those meetings as well, since there's five Mondays and Tuesdays in that month.
That's an excellent catch.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? We can, this first motion can deal with January and July, right off the bat, so, if we want to deal with that.
I would make that motion, Mr. President.
Second.
Okay, the motion is to move in January to the 8th and 22nd, and in July, the 9th and the 23rd. Am I correct?
Correct.
We have a motion to move those two months in a second. Any further discussion or questions?
The only comment would be, is if we're going to Tuesdays, if we, would we want July on the 10th and 24th then?
We'll have to.
Cross that then.
Then, yeah.
Just move in the weeks right now.
Yeah.
Because the other, like Mr. Kessel said, it, it requires an ordinance change, right?
Correct.
Okay, so...
Should you include September then? To the 10th and the 24th?
Well...
Because of Labor Day?
Well, it's not five weeks, though.
There's still two weeks. Do it on the 10th and the 24th.
That's one, if we make the ordinance change, it wouldn't be effective, though.
Yeah, once we make the ordinance change to Tuesdays, then it would...
Assuming we do.
And then we'll, we'll, we'll jump that hurdle in September. So, okay, so we have a motion to, to change January and July. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Altman's?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. January and July are approved for changes. And then, the discussion will be if... January and July are approved for changes, and then the discussion will be if we wanna leave them on Mondays or look at Tuesdays. And then, I guess, questions, comments to staff?
Mr. President, I have no problem moving them from Mondays to Tuesdays. I think it's probably a better, better idea, you know, a lot of things can happen over the weekend, and staff can get pretty busy on Mondays, you know, like in our business, Monday mornings especially are pretty busy, for, you know, Monday afternoons also. I have no problem with Tuesdays.
I think it would benefit staff, too. I would expect that we'd still get our packets on Thursday, though. So, that'll allow us time to review them on Friday, and then get ahold of staff on Monday.
President Decker, it'd be our intention to maintain the exact same schedule with regard to the production of the packet to the city commission.
Any other comments? Questions on moving it to Tuesday?
Proceed.
Okay, I guess the recommendation would be to bring the ordinance forward.
Okay.
To move our meetings to Tuesday, and maybe that'll take care of September.
So, President Decker, I do have two other quick reports if, after the 5 o'clock.
Okay. So, we have a 5 o'clock timetable, and that will be the Theodore Roosevelt Presidential Library.
Good evening. My name is Wally Goulet, and I have the privilege of being the new CEO for the Presidential Library, and we'd like to kinda bring you up to date on happenings with us, and we'll kinda give you a brief overview here. In my last 13 years, I was a, worked for a technology company, so I hope I can move these. Glad to be with you this evening. I also have our communications director, Shanna Shirheim, with us. She's accompanying me this evening, and has actually helped prepare our remarks for this evening. We're very proud to have TR, I call him TR, but Theodore Roosevelt is our subject for the Presidential Library, and we're finding nationally, he has a great following, and we always like to say that in the Badlands, it was here that he found the romance of his life beginning. Our mission as the Presidential Library and Museum is to explore the life, character, leadership, and legacy of one of the nation's most dynamic presidents. The Theodore Roosevelt Presidential Library and Museum interprets Theodore's life through interactive storytelling, exhibits, programs, and digital resources. To give you the idea of our grand vision for the project, it, we're gonna, we'll talk to you a little bit later about the phases that we're gonna go through, but the grand vision is a 58,000-square-foot facility with 20,000 feet for exhibit space. That grand vision will require the fundraising of $60 million for the construction, landscaping, and the exhibits. We're also intending to raise $40 million for an endowment fund to allow for the operations in perpetuity. We will be complying with the lead standards, that's very important to a number of potential donors, and just good stewardship, and we'll, we're working on the adoption of the agricultural, or the architectural and design standards for Presidential Libraries set by NARA, to the extent that it's practical. That's the, the National Archives and Records Administration, and since FDR, who established Presidential Libraries, all of the Presidential Libraries have been under NARA, with the exception of the most recent president, Barack Obama will not be under NARA, but we all, we all try to keep within those standards. I talked to you, I mentioned phase construction. The reason for the phasing is that with the ambitious fundraising that we have to do, we will not be able to get that all completed by the end of next year. It's probably gonna be a two-to-three-year phasing of that. But the legislature, with the $12 million that they have given to the, our foundation, has said that we need to be constructing something as, as early as next fall, which our plan is to start construction in October 2018. So, that, the first phase will be 25,000 square feet with 8,000 square feet of exhibit space, so that's down from the 58 and the 20, so you can see the smaller first phase. That will require $25 million for construction, landscaping, exhibits, and $5 to $12 million for the endowment fund. This is the phase that we're in right now, and the planning and design, I don't know if you can see that well, but Gallagher and Associates, they've done five Presidential Libraries and many other museums across the country, and they're, they're helping us with our visitor experience, and we have chosen out of a number of different possible designs the mini worlds of TR. Such, he was such a fascinating person that he went far beyond just his presidency, but the presidency will be the, the capstone of the, of the museum. This, we will introduce to visitors the complexity of his life and the character inviting exploration of thematic galleries, and those galleries, as you can see, are the president, the statesman and leader, the man of action, the naturalist and conservationist, and an introduction into his world, and the man of intellect. He read, he actually produced 20 books himself and read over 20,000. He has over 125,000 letters, so, you know, the man of intellect is, is something. And also, he started five national parks, many forestry projects, was the great conservation president. So, there's, there's just so many aspects of this, you know, the man of action will be talking about, you know, the Cuba invasion and the work of the Rough Riders there. You might even have a situation with the River of Doubt that he did after his presidency. So, there's a lot of elements to this great president. We are now in the process of building awareness. We're working closely with the national PR firm of Folger and Martine, who is developing our communications framework. They worked with us on the mission statement that we read to you. We're working on the logo, the national media plan, and the social media strategy, and in this building of awareness, they will be concentrating on his presidency, the man of action, the naturalist and conservationist, man of intellect, and the statesman and leader. All the things that we said will be in the museum will be different aspects that they will use nationwide. JLG Architects are working with us as our architectural consultant, and they're designing a building that will reflect all of these core messages and, and display them maybe in separate halls and, and, you know, so, that design will begin actually in, in 2018. I know a number of you in the past have seen this particular concept design. When we were interviewing architects, we had them all come in with conceptual drawings. This is theirs, but this may not be at all what results from that, but we're, we're working on that right now. In the finances, our capital campaign will be starting this month. We're working on, with our potential co-chairs for this, and hopefully by the end of the month, we will be able to announce those national co-chairs for this campaign. This kinda reiterates what we said earlier, but it's, the campaign will be a total of $100,000, and what's been raised so far with the city's generous contribution and that of the state, there's $15,350,000 there. Private gifts, totally, in this, I think we are very close to approaching $2 million, because in, since this slide was even made last week, we've, we've raised another $21,000. So, in our operational expenses, with all of the, the work and the consultants and the design work and construction matters, we're gonna, we'll need $1.2 million for the next five years, you know, to keep that operation rolling. City's certainly well aware of the Elkhorn Ranch cabin, and just go over that a little bit. We've had an internet, or I should say a Facebook campaign going on this as well, raising some funds in that fashion. With the Elkhorn Ranch, as you're probably all well aware, the cottonwood trees have been donated by the North Dakota Department of Corrections and ranchers along the Little Missouri River. Those have been gathered, debarked, and stacked out on the 27 acres north of the football field, and the construction of that is to begin in the spring of 2018, and that was something that had been planned or hoped to be built this last fall, but it, the practicality of that came into play, because working with these logs, we did not have a site plan where that will ultimately be built, and there was some excitement about trying to create at least the look of progress there, but some of us in, you know, our dialogues just said the cost would be really prohibitive, to put it up and then take it down and to move it, and it wouldn't be good for the log, so, so in our planning stage, as much as we wanted to have something there for the, for everyone to see the progress, it was a better use of money, and the logs themselves can warp if you move them around, put them in place, then take them out of place, and some are, some are the weight of, oh, let's see, what, three tons, one of those? So, it's, they're not easy to move around, and this is a large building of 30 by 60, so as much as we would have liked to have had this cabin for you to look at, it just didn't seem practical to put it up and then move it, you know, with all of the, those reasons as well. The, the private donations now, the sum today, like I say, from last week, we had $103,916 with recent contributions, $132,616 is how much we have raised to meet the match that the city has provided. So, we're looking at about another $260,000 to raise to complete the Elkhorn Cabin. Moving forward, we are creating the final design of the facility and grounds. The landscape designer has just been hired in the, in the past couple of weeks by JLG, and they're working with the programming designs that we're talking about with you, and we will be launching one, a couple of things simultaneously, both our, our fundraising campaign and the national PR campaign at the end of this month. And I can tell you that last, last week, I was in Washington with a number of us, and we were making contacts there. I can't really reveal all the folks that we're talking to, it's just one of those things that you don't do in the fundraising business, but we, we had some very positive meetings. This week, we, we're holding our board meeting out in Palo Alto area, and we have our first major reception. I can tell you that one of our, our good North Dakota proud sons, Rich Colgard, who's the publisher of Forbes, has assured us that he's bringing a number of his friends, and we're hoping to make some very good contacts in Silicon Valley this, on Thursday. The following week, I'm, I'm in Arizona, also doing some further fundraising for the organization, so that, that becomes front and center for all of us at this point. So, it's, it's a very ambitious program. The governor, Governor Burgum is four-square behind it. He puts his finger in my chest and says, "Don't think small. You think big at all times on this," so, and he, he's going to be with us as we work with our co-chairs, as we hope to get them signed on. It's a big task for any co-chair to, to come on, but with those co-chairs, we hope to bring on other fundraisers around the country, and we're adding national members to our board right now. We are adding two, one from Colorado and one from California, at our next board meeting, and we've got others on, on time. So, what we're doing is, is trying to build that national footprint out. There's the TR, TR Association, there's the Boone and Crockett, all of those folks follow them quite devotedly, and we're trying to tie into every TR group that we can, so. And our, our passion is to build a landmark worthy of TR, and that's something that we'll all be proud of in the state of North Dakota. And I open, I think this is the end of our little presentation, but I'd be glad to address any questions that the commission may have.
Any questions for Mr. Goulet? I guess I have a few, if, if no other commissioners do. I guess, Mr. Goulet, I'm glad that you guys are proceeding with the fundraising and everything's coming online. I guess my questions are, are basically the phased building and, and the Elkhorn. I saw within the slides that there's still some funding needed for the Elkhorn.
There is.
If that funding isn't realized by the spring, is that something that you're going to forego in, and just go ahead and, and build the big library, and maybe build the cabin later?
It's a great question, only 'cause I asked the same thing when I was being interviewed by the group when they hired me. It's, it's a great, it's a great piece to have here, and I, hopefully, we will be able to cover that, that fundraising. I mean, we're, we're optimistic that by the spring, that, that will be covered, but the question whether or not to put the Elkhorn up before the, the main building was, is a good business question, and, and one that we, we kinda continue to work with, but it's certainly our, our hope. Jim Osman has been doing a fine job, and as I say, even, even since we did these slides last week, we raised 30,000, so there's a good momentum going on right now as well.
And then, there's, your first phase is 25 million, if I'm correct?
That's right.
And, trying to look at the difference here, you're at, you're sitting at about 19 total?
Um, that's, I think, I think you're right, yeah, it's...
Between the city and the state, you're...
Yeah, there'd be that much...
And from private.
Yeah, and, you know, part of the strategy in, in selecting our co-chairs, too, is that we're looking for lead gifts in that, that arena, so as that, as that happens, we're hoping that the funding is there very shortly for completing that first phase.
Okay, and, and say your, your fundraising exceeds expectations out in Palo Alto, and you, would you then no longer build in a phase? Would you just build the complete structure? Just say if you, by January, end of January next year, you had the 60 million needed, would the, the phase, then all of a sudden, you're not going to build in phases?
That'd be, that would be our, you know, it's, it's a wonderful thought. I, I like, I like, I like the way you're thinking, but yes, we would not phase it at that point, if we had, we had the full funding. What, what we're finding, this is an ambitious project, and, and it's a little, that's a little bit of a wrinkle for us, 'cause fundraising like this might take two to three years when you're looking at the figure we're looking at, so having a build requirement as soon as we do is, you know, really, you have to be agile, and you have to do that, but we're saying, I, hopefully, hopefully with our lead gifts, that we, in the next quarter, I would think would be something we will be announcing, and then with the lead gift, your, your strategy also is to follow with other gifts after that, so I, I hope my next report to you can talk about what that looks like.
All right. I, I think we'd like to have you before us again sometime in February, March, to see how everything's going.
Glad to be back, yeah. And you're gonna see a lot more from us. We have so many things going in sequence, you know, from, you know, starting the fundraising campaigns, to doing the national media, to, to doing the planning, it's, it's a lot of plates in the air at one time, so we're, just wanna let you know how, how that's all coming, and we've got great people that, that work on this project. Thank you for the time.
Could I add one thing?
Yes.
As far as the phasing question, one thing the architects are working on is concurrent planning of the full-scale project and the phased project at the same time, so if the funding is available, the programming's already in place, the space needs, the, the building designs will be there, so.
Just, just for the record, will you state your name, so the public?
Oh, I'm Shanna Shirheim.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you for the update.
Yep.
Thank you for the time, appreciate it.
We have one other timetable. We have one other timetable item, and that is a presentation from WANK. Mr. Zurov, are you...
Howard Trussell with WANK, and we'll be doing a presentation and an update to the commission on the landfill expansion and acquisition project. After the presentation, we do have a fast order, amendment to the contract that we would like to get approved. But this has been ongoing for quite a long time, and I've discussed with, with Howard that it's time we bring it to your commission and give an update of where we're at.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zurov.
Well, commissioners, my name is Howard Trussell from WANK Associates. I'm a senior engineer that's been working with the city now for about seven, eight years on the solid waste landfill. One of the big issues facing you now seems to be a long-term capacity issue, and what can be done about that. You have a lot of site capacity left in the depth, but you're having problems where you're going to get, where's room to be able to put new things, all of those, getting dirt stuff. So I'm following up on, one of the big recommendations was made to go to the north and get the property up there and see if it worked. So we see if it was even acceptable to the North Dakota Department of Health, we submitted a pre-application, which is necessary to say, yes, it looks like it could be acceptable for a landfill or not. They approved the, the pre-application, subject to doing some exploratory drilling on the property to clarify some issues that they brought up because of the, the history of the property. We did a detailed file review of the Department of Health files to see what else was available. That was back in October of last year. Okay? And from the Department of Health approval letter, they said to proceed, this is a quote, "The city of Dickinson will need to clarify issues on underground mining and potential subsidence." So they requested a work plan to look at some exploratory drilling up there before they would fully sign off on it. Now where we're looking is, I think you can see in the middle, that's where your existing landfill is right now. And does this have a...
It does.
A laser in it? Anyways, there's... Oh, there it goes, thanks. Up in here is the old Royal Oak Husky Mine area, and what we're looking at is expanding up into this property from here going up. And this was just a preliminary sketch we included for the Department of Health to see what we were doing. So the blue are essentially, they would be ponds, you know, for stormwater. This would be a leachate pond, and so, okay. So basically, they commented back, and one of the things they brought up, obviously, is all of this area over here to the west is underground mines that was mined back in the 1920s, 40s, 50s, and it has a lot of problems with subsidence. So they say, "How are you going to deal with that?" Then there also turned out to be in the files, there were three landfills on the property that turned out to be there. One is an old solid waste landfill I talked about. This one was full of phenols, phenols that are made from the processing. And here's an old construction demolition debris site. These are just some, these are some, air photos that were taken in the 85, 86 that are on file. And you could see, here's all of the, these are old settling ponds associated with the facility. Here is your landfill. Obviously, it hadn't even been dug out yet. Here is where they were actively strip mining. This is just another one a year later. Okay, so as, in summary from the state, the state says in the letter, well, as proposed, the site is geologically and hydrologically suitable, they just want to see several issues, several issues addressed. What are those issues? The Husky Royal Oak plant began operations in the 1920s, so it's had a long, long history. It generated coal tar and other wastes reportedly disposed in some of the disturbed mine areas on-site. That was typical for the time period, no big deal, that's just what happened. They used to dispose of it, but they did note that when you had the hazardous waste rules put in place in the 1970s, 80s, they began to burn the coal tar as fuel in the plant. It was investigated by Circa, the Superfund Site, back in the late 80s, early 90s, and it was known to have hazardous waste, coal tars and phenols. Those are issues, those things are known carcinogens. The coal tar pitch was from the charcoal-making process, and ironically, the phenols are from the, the scrubbing of the air pollution to make sure that it doesn't go up into the air. But essentially, the phenols were evaporated in on-site, unlined ponds. It got rid of a whole lot of coal ash and plant trash. They did document, whoops, they did document groundwater contamination. Good grief, I went aways. There it is. They did document groundwater contamination out there, but the hazard ranking score when they did it for the National Pollution NPL list, it didn't make it because although there was groundwater contamination, hazardous waste, there weren't down gradient receptors, which means there weren't a whole lot of homeowners or wells or downside. It was the Hart River, which kind of surprised me, but that's what they said. All right. It was, they noted, a conditionally exempt, small quantity generator hazardous waste. So it was known to be. And one of the things they did do is they burned contaminated, the pentachlorophenol soils from your West Plains Electric Co-op Facility cleanup. So they were obviously trying to help out there. So they were a pretty good neighbor for the time. All right. So the factors that, to me, affect the property acquisition. The site was investigated in 1988. It was not put on the, it was not put on the national priorities list. And so there was a lot of work with the Department of Health trying to close things, the landfills, the ash cleanup, the closing the phenol ponds. The problem is, okay, so now there is no active site work going out there. So it would seem that, okay, must be happy, the EPA and the Department of Health must be accepted of it. But what the problem is, is this going to remain so in the future? If it becomes a landfill and you expand it up into there and you uncover something, then what happens? Who's going to fund the cleanup? Is it going to be Royal Oak? Is it going to be the city, the state, or the federal government? And that's where we've been recommending, and I think the city, the city has done it, involve your attorney to make sure you're represented properly. When they did the Public Service Commission in 2003, they were helping to expand Lehigh Road or put it paved, I'm not sure what it was. But they did an awful lot of drilling out there, and there was a lot of subsidencees associated with it. So they ended up putting in like 23,000 cubic yards of concrete trying to, to fill up some of those caverns that kept opening under, up, up under the road. Well, they took a groundwater sample, and they showed phenols at 108,000 micrograms per liter, and they'd found nine different metals, including arsenic, cadmium, all that sort of stuff. Now, is that an issue? Don't know, because it was taken 12 years after the site. But I will tell you, the drinking water standard for one particular pentachlorophenol is one, not 108,000. So we have to see. I don't know. So what is really happening underneath all those old mine workings? And if a groundwater issue develops under your site, then who's going to be responsible? The three solid waste landfills out there, they're supposedly were just bagging waste and from maybe broken wooden pallets. But the Department of Health has interview notes that said, "Well, you're putting large quantities of coal ash and other stuff in there that isn't allowed, so you had to stop." The one small pond up in the north was taking in, it was lined with a 10-mill synthetic plastic envelope, you know, to do it. Well, today's standards require 60-mill minimum, and it was over old mine working. So I guess I'd like to know, where did all those phenols go over the 50 to 60 years that they were doing it? Did it get into the groundwater? Where'd it go? Okay, so it was also all mined using, that entire parcel up there was mined with strip mining techniques. When they took off the, the coal, what happened? How did they put the stuff, how did they put the overburden back? We have some issues now where the area was so soft, it wasn't compacted at all, they had to dig it all out and put it back in order to make it structurally sound. This was supposedly done with scrapers, so I would assume it is, but we don't know until you actually look into it. Any of the native topsoil is likely all removed. It's all reclaimed land, so it's only going to be whatever they put back. I was hoping, you know, when we got the expansion to there, it would have extra topsoil to be used for the, the closure of the existing landfill. Well, that doesn't sound like it's going to be. And then the other, the coal is presumably all removed, so when you affect a fair market value of the property, what is that, how does that affect it? The other thing is, is it useful for landfilling? Okay, is there enough soil still there, or is it mostly all large rocks? No one knows until we dig it up or drill through it. Okay, so we have a lot of unknowns, and so we recommended that you need to be able to look into it. And that's what we're recommending, that's what this proposal is all about right now. We're installing, we're recommending installing soil borings within the property to evaluate conditions and evaluate potential costs for the city. Okay, say you acquire it and you have to do something environmentally, what kind of costs are you looking at? What are the cost benefits to the city if you use this site versus another site? So this is what we're recommending, a preliminary boring investigation work plan out there. And we're looking at, if you look at the, this is supposedly that old three-acre landfill. We're seeing it supposedly had 25 feet of material or whatever it is. So we're looking to do a couple into there, and then we're looking at about six borings down to, unfortunately, we had to go so deep because of the Lehigh, coal was down to like 140 feet in some places. So that's what we're having to do to make sure what have they done? And that's sort of why some of this high cost. We prepared the drilling investigation boring work plan, submitted it to the state, and they have now approved it. They have a letter here that was dated October 18th where they approved the work plan. We're looking at several environmental, geotechnical concerns that we already talked about. It's mostly because it's got a long history as an industrial site. The work plan has been submitted to both the landowner as well, I mean, Mr. Wolf, I believe. One thing I do note is that if the land, if the place becomes a landfill, it has to have a detailed hydrogeologic investigation characterization. This material that's going on now would be very helpful to further reduce that. It would probably take about half of what it would have to be in the future. So what we're proposing to do is conduct a field investigation, which would be those eight borings that you were seeing. We would do also, because of the fact we're going into contaminated or not, I'm not sure, but I'm not willing to risk my people, so we're looking at doing air monitoring for safety purposes, as well as conduct field screening. We're looking for any contamination, so we want to take soil samples and all that sort of stuff to see if there's an issue. We will do the groundwater stuff. We're overseeing the boring abandonments. Normally, you just kind of fill them back in, but because of the fact this is not your property, we are trying to do a very good job to make sure that there will never be any issue from Mr. Wolf that, "Oh, you opened up contamination, contamination pathways into the subsurface." That will not happen. Upon completion, then we're going to do a summary investigation that will really talk about the, all of the geologic and hydrogeologic stuff we found, as well as assessment of any existing potential geotechnical stability issues and contaminant migration. This is the issues, is it going to cause a problem in the future? And because of the fact that we're working on Mr. Wolf's property, we're going to do a detailed photographic log of the site before, during, and after the investigation. So there, we'll survey all the disturbances and everything, so there will be no, no controversies about, "Well, how much did you guys disturb?" or anything like that, okay? We will come up with conclusions for, is this a good site for the city to do? And if so, what kind of costs are we looking, things like that. We're going to be going through your city attorney, because I think that they should be like the first reader of all this. Our cost estimate, I think, is in front of you. We're estimating $100,000, which is off the, more than we would normally do for a property like this. But in this case, because of the depth of the, you know, to the coal, we have to go down, you have to go out there, it's going to be two full weeks of drilling, and it's going to be quite a bit. But essentially, what we're looking at, WANK's portion would be about 42,000, and expenses, the expenses would be subcontractors and everything else, would be about 60,000 almost. So we would be looking, we have it detailed in there. But essentially, what we're looking at for analytical laboratory fees would be about 10,000. Then the driller would be about 50, another 50,000, and, or, I'm sorry, that's a total of 50,000. And so the whole, the whole thing comes up to 100,000. Because of the master services agreement we have with the county, the city, we bid all of this work out. So we have bid it out to three different labs. Pace Lab came in the best deal for you. And in this case, TerraCon came out for the drillers. This was one, there was a huge range on the drilling. This one was going to be for, it's the exact same scope. This one was 38,000 for TerraCon. And Braun, for some reason, they must not like the job or something, they wanted 88,000. So we're obviously taking the, the lower one. Now, as far as what are some of WANK's kind of, you know, there's obviously some issues. Is this, it is expensive, and I know that. Okay, so here's some of these expensive, or some of these hydrogeologic investigations we've done in the very recent past. You know, they'll range anywhere from a low of about 26,000 up to 167,000, depends on what you have to do. We're usually around 50% of that. The other 50% is the drillers and the analytical labs. As far as recent proposals to the city of Dickinson, these are the most, the 10 most recent that we've done with you. And as you can see, mostly, most of our work is 100% us, because that's all we're doing, we're not trying to build anything. The one where we did, this was the construction of cell 2B, 3B, 4, which is the last landfill cell. Now that one, that was, came out, total fees about one and a quarter million, of which 13% with us, and the other 87% was for the contractors to do the actual work. So with that, what kind of questions would you like? Feel free.
Any questions for Mr. Trussell?
Mr. Trussell, first of all, thank you. That was very enlightening. I think we've had a lot of questions, and we're all fully aware of the, the issue that is the current landfill and expansion possibilities. So we would be looking at this report somewhere in December?
January.
January?
Mm-hmm.
And that's contingent on weather and...
Weather, we go fourth, obviously. But the other is that they, usually the analytical labs take six weeks to get the analytical, to get the groundwater chemistry or the soil chemistry back. It's about a two-week process for the drilling. chemistry back. It's about a two-week process for the, uh, drilling, and it's already been approved by the state, so it's a matter of getting it out hopefully before winter. Yeah, and then it's take about six weeks to get the analytical results back.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Kessel, um, what would the funding source for this investigation be?
Commissioner Trustum, this item has been on our, uh, gen- or our CIP plan for quite some time. We've always used GPT revenue. It's been our highest priority, um, topic for probably the last four years. Um, so that would be the revenue stream that we'd continue to recommend.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Trussell? I guess I, I have a few. Um, the difference between the drilling companies?
Mm-hmm.
Pretty wide.
I think it's who wants to do it and who's got a rig available close.
Uh, my question was, have you worked with any of the?
All of them.
All of them?
We've worked with all of them. We only send it to people we've worked with quite a bit. And it's like dealing with contractors, you know, if, if they have a lot of work, or they're willing to bid, but they don't really want it, so they'll, they'll bid high. And I think that's what happened here. But we got a pretty good one out of TerraCon, and they're out of Bismarck.
Okay. And I know one of your studies is gonna be on the groundwater, you said. Would it be best to do this in the spring when there is actually water?
No. In this case, we're gonna be taking it from the drilling rig. So we'll be, any rig, any water that we're gonna be, is, is gonna be like a hundred foot down.
Okay, so it's actual?
Yeah.
Subsurface water?
Exactly. We have all of this stuff from the lab, or from the landfill already, but that isn't what we're concerned about. We're concerned about any interaction with those underground mines. It's a perfect price, it's a perfect place for a landfill, you know, and the issue is, that's why we need to have the, the lawyer involved to protect your interests. But as far as a, you know, use of a property, well, we're asking to make it into a landfill, you know, so it's just a matter of not gonna hurt anybody, but we ought to make sure that you guys are aware of what you're getting into.
Then my, uh, other question would be for Mr. Kessel and Mrs. Kreit. Mrs. Kreit, um, have the agreements been okayed for them to proceed onto the land? I know that was an issue at one time.
Oh, the, oh, um, Commissioner Decker, the, uh, yes, the process of, of obtaining permission to get on the land has gone through McAuf Kellogg specifically. We've communicated with Mr. Wolf to obtain that, that permission to get on, uh, the land. There will be compensation provided to Mr. Wolf for that purpose and for damages that were spoken about by, uh, Mr. Trussell.
All right, any other questions? Comments? I guess I would move then, if there are no, no further questions or comments, I would move to Mr. Zurov for the task order.
Mayor Decker, uh, commission members, um, as you can see, the amendment and the investigation on this is, is important, especially to determine the environmental impact of what the city might be getting into. Um, as, as Howard said, there's four tasks not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars. Um, so, uh, I guess I would recommend, and staff recommends, approval.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Zurov? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to either approve or deny the amendment to the Wink Associates contract.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
You have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The Wink Associates contract is approved. All right, next up.
President Decker, I do have a couple of reports I'd like to?
Oh, yes, you did, so you had it.
If you don't mind. Just, I, I know they're not on the agenda. It was, they're simply reports, no action by the commission at all, but, uh, we did have a busy week. Uh, last week, we also held the Western Dakota Energy Association Conference in, in Dickinson. Uh, it was, was pretty well attended, um, and throughout that conference, we heard a lot of different presentations. Um, certainly, you know, the majority were, were of tremendous interest. I think the one that most people look forward to is, uh, Mr. Lynn Helms, um, and he gives an outlook, county by county, of what he believes oil, uh, activity will be in each of those counties. And I'm here to say that, that his outlook for Stark was an increasing, uh, oil production and, um, development activity. Uh, so I think that, you know, we've seen a recovery in two thousand seventeen in, in oil-related activity, and it appears that we'll continue to see, uh, that activity in two thousand eighteen and beyond. So, um, I'll, I'm just gonna hand over the, uh, the report, or excuse me, the syllabus, I guess, for the, uh, conference, um, and just say that we were, again, Dickinson showed itself, uh, well. Um, people who attended appreciated the content and the surroundings. And then my last report is the ICMA conference. I did attend the International City County Managers Conference. Thank you for allowing me to do that. It is by far the best conference for city administrators or managers, uh, that's out there. Um, I just wanted to share with you some of the materials that, uh, I brought back from that conference and the, the variety of the conference materials. Um, one of them was on, uh, STAR Community Rating System to measure local sustainability, and then I attended another one on doing away with dog catchers and calling them, uh, facility, um, I can't even remember what the exact title was, but I have brought back some of those materials to the executive team already. Uh, I'll hand these around to you. And then I'm, the last thing that I wanted to mention is, they do a virtual conference, they call it, which means that a selected, um, a select few of the presentations that were actually made at the conference are available on digital. And I have access, since I was an attendee, to watch these for about thirty days, which means you have access to these, uh, materials for about thirty days. So I, if you wouldn't mind just taking one and passing it down, these are the conference, um, presentations that are available. If you are interested in, uh, looking or viewing any of these, please let me know, and, uh, I can make sure that we make arrangements to, uh, to get you, um, the proper permissions to, to watch those individual presentations. Um, but it's, I, again, thank you for allowing me to go. It is, it is excellent. I look forward to it every year, uh, and I've never been disappointed in the level of, uh, quality of the presentation provided. So that concludes my, uh, my reports for this evening.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any questions for Mr. Kessel on any of his reports? I thought the, the most intriguing thing at the WDEA was the report on the refracking, and how much they're producing out of old wells, um, or producing wells and what they're getting out of them. It was, it was, uh, great information, and it's, it's good to hear that there's some more development going on, which backs up what we presented to the, the Energy Commission.
EOR, or Enhanced Oil Recovery, they spoke about four different tests that are going on in, uh, around the state. And right now, we produce about, uh, ten percent of the available oil that's in the ground, uh, and they think that they may be able to raise that between seventeen and thirty-five percent, as they do in other oil plays across the nation. And if they can do that, that obviously means they may be able to double the amount of oil they can bring out of the, uh, subsurface, uh, which would, uh, obviously have a tremendous impact on western North Dakota. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kessel. Moving on, we're moving on to public safety. Um, first item up is the fire department.
Good evening, Mayor Decker and Commissioners. Several months ago, the Dickinson Fire Department came before you and asked your approval for us to develop specifications and pursue bids for a new pumper for the city of Dickinson. That process has now been completed. Our truck committee has done their due diligence. Bids have been received. All of that information, including the bid tab sheet, should be available to you. At this time, we come before you to ask your approval of entering into a contract with Hyman Fire Equipment Rosenbauer Fire Apparatus. They are not the low bid, they are two hundred and twelve dollars above the low bid, but they are the only vendor that has submitted a bid that does not take any exception to our specification. I've included a copy of their warranty and service, um, agreement, and what they have available. They're, they're very flexible with that, one of the most flexible vendors, and making sure that service work can be done properly and within a community. So Commissioners, at this time, I would ask that, uh, you'd give consideration to approving, entering into a contract with Hyman Fire Equipment to build our next pumper for the city of Dickinson.
Any questions for Chief Seavock? Mr. Kessel?
If I may, Chief Seavock, there's a deduct, uh, that's included in their bid. Did you include the deduct in your bid tabulation, or was that separate distinct?
That was separate, and then that, uh, truly depends on the, the flexibility for the city with the financing. What we're looking at, Commissioners, is that this truck will be paid for with the insurance premium tax rebate monies that the city receives once a year. That's, uh, was tremendous in paying off our last truck, a seven-year lease that we actually paid off in three years. And, uh, to, in order to realize that deduction, we would have to have a little over two hundred and thou- uh, two hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars available when the chassis would be ready, which would be about six months from the signing of the contract. Uh, we know that the insurance rebate check that we're receiving at the end of this year will give us, um, probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to work with until next November, when we get the other one. And that, that money that would make that possible to realize that deduct wasn't budgeted for. We worked strictly off of the insurance premium tax money that we're getting. So when I looked at it, Mr. Kessel, we looked at it strictly from the whole dollar amount, unless there is flexibility that we can find, we could realize that deduction.
Chief, uh, when would this truck be delivered to us approximately?
It would be about a twelve-month build time, or, or longer. That, that's, that's consistent across the board with all the vendors. Um, we're hoping, it would be next At that point in time, hopefully, and I've had this discussion with Deputy Administrator Carlson, we would very possibly have a second insurance premium tax check in our account already. So we could make a substantial cash payment on that truck, look at lease, lease purchasing the remainder, which has been a common practice for us with the trucks.
Chief, uh, to, to realize the deduct, what would be exactly, we have, um, the chassis is two sixteen, and you're expecting?
Um, it's, I, it's kind of a guess at this, but that check should be coming in any day, actually.
Okay.
Uh, just to give you an example, last year, we received, uh, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. In two thousand fifteen, we received a hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred. In fourteen, we received a hundred and seventy-three thousand. So I, I think it would be cautious and safe to say we'll realize a hundred and fifty thousand. So we'd be looking at sixty-some thousand dollars in addition, I would guess, at that time, to realize that deduct.
President Decker, it may be in our best interest to realize the deduct, uh, pay forward, uh, the amount, and then reimburse ourselves once the new check arrives.
I was, I was gonna suggest that you work with Mrs. Carlson and, and possibly find a funding mechanism that allow for us to realize that deduct, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to also add again, at this time, this apparatus will replace two pumpers that are both over thirty years old for us.
I, I think we are fully aware of the date of some of your trucks. I was reading something the other day about manual transmissions, and they're a thing of the past. Most of us sitting here have probably driven one, but the, the young people out in the crowd there that Mrs. Trustum, uh, has every day in class, I bet they'd, uh, it's been a long time, or have never seen a manual transmission in a vehicle, but, um, so what your, go ahead, no, go ahead. Are those trucks we're getting rid of worth anything? I mean?
We'll, we will realize something from them, but the, the last one we got rid of in two thousand fourteen, the end of two thousand fourteen, was, uh, over thirty years old. It was a custom Class A pumper, uh, served us well for many, many years, and we got a little over five thousand dollars for it. It was loaded up onto a flatbed and went to a resort community in Washington State that had nothing. So, um, these may be a bit more desirable locally, because they are both four-wheel drive, uh, commercial cab and chassis type pieces of equipment, but that's about where you're gonna be.
Okay. And I think we realized some costs also with bringing them up on maintenance.
Oh, yes.
I think if the, the last one, I think we, it was a wash by the time we were done fixing it up for sale. So.
They're worth nothing, basically.
So, I guess what, uh, Chief Seavock is looking for is a motion to approve or deny this bid.
Mr. President, we approve the contract.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the bid.
Second.
And a second. Any further comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Your bid is approved.
Thank you.
We have nothing from the police department tonight, nothing from engineering. And next up, we have Public Works Solid Waste Manager, Strauss.
Good evening, President Decker and Commissioners. Tonight, I'm going to have a presentation, uh, for the elimination of the rearload collection route, uh, with also some actions that'll be taking place at the end. Uh, if you could please refrain on the comments until the end, I'll have a questions area where we can talk about it. So the lim- uh, the rearload collection route is the route that collects additional residential trash that's placed outside or beside ninety-six gallon and three-hundred gallon containers, and not picked up by the automated side-load trucks. Why do we want to eliminate it? It's a duplication of services, the amount of manpower and labor that is required, increased safety issues and concerns, associated costs with operating that truck, and then I'll also provide you with some recommendations. As far as duplication of service goes, the city of Dickinson currently provides ninety-six gallon containers to the area residents for automated trash collection. The additional trash is placed beside the container for collections by the rearload truck at no additional fee on their utility bill. When the materials are picked up with the rearload truck, they're co-mingled, so therefore they're non-recyclable. They go into our landfill and they use additional landfill space. Automation was implemented in early nineteen eighties to eliminate the amount of manpower required for one truck. Every side-load truck that's out there right now, currently we have three running on the routes, requires one person per truck. The rearload truck operations requires three full-time people, it's one full-time operator and two labors, to collect all the materials that are placed beside and outside of the containers. During the summer and fall months, we often double that, so there's two operators and four labors if our department allows for it. As you can see, the, on the left, you have a picture of the side-load, one person operating it. Picture on the right is a picture of the rearload we're currently running, where there's three people involved. As far as safety issues and concerns go, uh, we had increased injuries due to, uh, to employees. Uh, fifty percent of our injuries in two thousand sixteen were related to the rearload operations. They were back-related issues, sprains, cuts, and punctures, all due to repetitive motion and unknown materials that were placed inside of the bags. In, uh, beginning of two thousand six, uh, October of two thousand sixteen, we enhanced our safety awareness program in our department to eliminate, or try to eliminate, a lot of those injuries that were taking place. And we've had some success on that portion as of now. Some examples of the safety concerns, the picture on the left, you'll see there's numerous bags. Uh, we don't know what's inside those, those bags, so when the, uh, labors get up to them, they have to grab them with their hands, throw them into the back of the truck, and that's where the punctures and all the injuries occur. As well as they have to maintain or work around that curb that's always in place. The grill is unacceptable materials, it's metal that could be recycled. And there's a lot of loose debris that could blow across the streets into the neighbors' property, especially in North Dakota where we have our windy days. On the right, you'll see a swing- On the right, you'll see a swing set, one household, there's a total of five mattresses, must've been a sale at a local store or something. And then again, down on the bottom, in that area, you'll see some unknown chemicals and products that are actually unacceptable, they're hazardous to be even disposed of in our landfill. January of two thousand and sixteen, that, the rearload truck collected eleven thousand fifty-two tons of materials, which equated at our current rate to about fifty thousand dollars in revenue. From January to October of two thousand and seventeen, thus far, they've collected just about eight hundred and seventy-five tons, which equates to a little better than thirty-eight thousand dollars. These costs are not factored into any of the monthly billing charges as the monthly utility bill pays for one container per week pickup for the month, so four times per Two thousand and sixteen fuel costs were just a, a little bit over forty-five hundred dollars versus two thousand and seventeen, were right at four thousand dollars. And again, that's from January through October. Maintenance costs in two thousand and sixteen were a little over seven thousand dollars. We're having issues with one of the rearload trucks that we currently have, and then those costs did come down to about fifteen hundred so far this year. Combined wages and benefits without any overtime, you're looking for the three employees that operate the rearload truck is about a hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. About seventy percent of their time is spent on the route, so that equates to about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and then thirty percent of their duty, or of their other duties are applied to the department where they're helping out with the baler, cleaning up around the facilities, helping with trash pickup and whatnot. If we end up replacing a rearload truck, it's gonna cost, on the average, a hundred and thirty-five thousand, and that's a two thousand and fifteen number for the last truck we purchased. The purpose for the changes is for the city of Dickinson to provide single-stream recycling that is efficient, effective, and economically feasible at the lowest cost to our residents. Uh, as you guys know, we were working on a contract with Renaissance Recycling. The current recycling committee did meet, and the sister city that we were looking at, City of Jamestown, is utilizing Renaissance as well, and they're running into a lot of issues right now with that company. I don't think it would be of the best interest of the city of Dickinson to follow suit and provide a ten-year contract as he requested to them. So, uh, the recycling committee did meet, and we are looking at possibly or potentially doing this in-house, and by eliminating the rearload hel- or route would make some employees available to assist with that transition. We'd restructure our solid waste department accordingly to provide the recycling service to our residents, and then the, the other employees that would not be CDL drivers would be reassigned to other duties within the department, and that would be helping out around the baler, doing the garbage cleanup and such as they did when they were off the road. The main goal is to provide fair and equitable services to all residents. As you can see, the picture on the left, there's three containers there, nothing placed beside. Those employees pay, or those customers pay thirteen dollars per month, just as the employee on the right does, whom has probably that amount of bags out every week or every other So some recommenda- recommendations that we would have with the elimination of the rearload route is to provide an additional ninety-six gallon container for excess trash if needed at an additional fee of six dollars and fifty cents per month per can. We already have that fee structure in place, and we are utilizing it with some of our residents currently. If we do go recycling, there would be two, they, each resident would already have two cans, so this would obviously be for the third addition, or second additional if they need it for trash, which I would imagine most people maybe would, probably wouldn't. You could utilize the baler building, the recycling sites for drop-offs of acceptable materials. Some special accommodations could be made to those residents that, uh, that need it at a specified fee, which would need to be approved by you as City Commission. We'd look to increase our spring and fall cleanup weeks. Uh, currently, we're only doing a spring cleanup week right now, it lasts about two weeks, between two and three weeks typically. Uh, we could look at exceeding that and then possibly running the rearload to help out pick up stuff, you know, for a couple of weeks during the spring and a couple of weeks during the fall. And potentially, we'd look at extending our baler building hours to accommodate people's needs as well. So tonight, I'm looking for an action to approve or deny the elimination of the rearload route. Implementation would take place prior to single, elimination would take place prior to the implementation of the recycling program, which would come at a later point. And I guess I'm open to any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Prowse or Mrs. Zeroff?
Mr. Prowse, I know a lot of people depend on their rearload, and, and I hate to see it go, but I understand why, why we're looking to see it go. Currently, it's a year-round service.
Correct.
Okay. I, I wouldn't mind looking if we offered for the three or four months in the, in the summer, uh, spring, summer, fall, you know, whether it be a June, July, and August or something like that. I wouldn't mind taking a look at that. The other thing you mentioned is accommodate for fee, you know, so if someone has a mess like the one you showed up there, I agree, that, that's not really a rearload that we're looking for, but if they want to pick us up, it should cost them.
Correct.
I agree with that. So, and then your spring and fall cleanup, I like that, those options off. It's gonna give people a chance twice a year to get rid of those, those big items and so on, uh, so, but, uh, the accommodate for fee, if the, the one picture you had of all the leaves and bags, or the bags and all that, I could see where they call up and say, I got thirty bags of lawn or, or leaves and so on for ten bucks, we'll come by, swing it up, or whatever, you know, I'm, I'm okay, I think that, that's a nice alternative. So, you know, we're, we're given some alternatives in lieu of just getting rid of the program, so, so I like that. I was concerned we were just gonna get rid of it, and it's a service that I know a lot of people use. I use it a lot, but, uh, you know, so, anyway, I, it's some good plans there.
Thank you, Carson Steiner, or Mr. Steiner. And again, the reason behind it is, like I said earlier, to provide fair and equitable services.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Prowse or Mrs. Zeroff?
Mr. Prowse, so when do you think single-stream recycling would come?
Upon the approval of the elimination of the rearload, my next steps would be this through the ne- course of the next month to come back sometime, probably the first meeting in December with a proposed plan for recycling.
And we're gonna do it in-house? Is that, that's what?
We would plan to do it in-house if we could eliminate the rearload full-time.
We'd like, we'd like to, excuse me, Commissioner Friedrich, we'd like to, uh, to try to keep the cost of recycling down, this was, you know, the option we focused on. So if, if we can reduce or eliminate the rearload, um, we can, you know, use, like Aaron said, some of the manpower and stuff for single-stream recycling, um, and to keep the cost down. Originally, we looked at the, the single-stream recycling in-house, um, and we, we're pretty conservative, and, uh, at that time, it, it looked like the costs were gonna be pretty high, and, um, and that's, I think, when the committee decided that we would, you know, do an RFP, RFQ for recycling services through the other vendors. Now, I, I think, as we've learned a lot about single-stream recycling, distances, costs, Mr. Prowse has made a lot of contacts, um, I think it could be feasible, or is feasible, for the city to do it at a cost possibly lower than what was submitted, but that's what we have to go through, and we'd like to put those costs together and present that if we know that this is an option to eliminate.
If I could add to that, too, very briefly, uh, we have been working with Ms. Carlson, and there is a recycling fund that would help cover some of our capital expenses that we had not figured in at an early point, uh, when we came the first time around, so we did find, uh, some additional cash that could help cover that cost of the capital to help lower the cost of the resident.
What kind of costs are, is the city associated with, with, uh, the recycling? I mean, we got a bid from the recycling company to come in at six dollars or whatever a month. Where is our cost coming into this?
Our cost will be the collection portion of it, but we also have to pay to dispose of the materials, and then there's a long equation that works out.
You're talking of the recycled?
Of the recyclable materials.
I thought that they were collecting recycled material and that they would deposit it, and we would get part of that funding.
Mr. Steiner, one of the options we're looking at now is not to go forward with the contract with Renaissance Recycling. They want a ten-year contract, um, and as Mr. Prowse said at the beginning, the sister city that we were following, uh, it hasn't not been implemented, um, they're currently not real happy with, in other words, it's not got off the ground.
But in the contract, isn't there about five, six years of increased costs?
They wanted a ten-year contract for services, and we haven't, we haven't approved that contract, so that's what we're looking at, is not approving that contract and doing the whole thing in-house.
So, it actually all cost us money to get rid of the materials?
It'll cost us money to get rid of the materials, but the value of the materials comes back to us once the tons are received at the, uh, material recovery facility.
We'll pick up a little bit.
The company I've been having a lot of discussion with through two thousand and sixteen, his client seen about a ten doll- or about a twelve-dollar fee per ton for disposal, plus transportation. Um, two thousand and fifteen, that, there was a payback of like a seven or eight dollars per ton to his resident, or to his customers. So, it's, he took, when I was visiting with him, he basically told me to figure a, about a zero, um, for disposal fee, a zero-dollar transaction, and then the only cost would be our transportation.
And, and that's a pretty big cost, is, you know, collecting it is one cost, but disposing transportation mileage is the biggest cost, and, and that's why it's been so difficult to implement recycling.
Would we do that with our own trucks, or?
Currently, I'm looking at putting in a compactor station, um, attached to the baler building, and then we would load into fifty-three-foot semi-trailers with walking floors, and I'd hire an outside contractor to pull our trailers to the material recovery facility. Um, we did initially, in the beginning, look at possibly doing some OTR ourselves and hauling that material. I don't think it would be economically feasible for us to provide that.
And then there would be some cost, too, buying the, um?
Equipment.
Equipment.
Correct.
Yes, the trucks and the canisters.
As, as far as our capital costs go right now, would be the equipment for obviously compacting it into the trailers. There would be two trailers and then the containers.
Right.
And down the road, um, we'd be looking at possibly adding a couple side-loaders into our fleet, I would guess in nineteen.
So one of our three side-loads could handle the recycling, you think? Because we have three now, right?
We actually have a total of five side-loads, and three of them run on the routes, the other two are backup trucks, so when one goes down, we have a backup. Um, the way I have it structured right now, we'd be utilizing all five trucks pretty much on a daily basis, and the recycling that we would provide would be every other week, so there'd be three trucks one week, five trucks the next. We are looking at restructuring our route system a little bit to see if we can get, uh, complete our routes with, uh, two trucks each.
It's a pretty aggressive practice for a community that's been pretty well standard, you know, so the key is, we're gonna have to educate very well to let them know.
There is a-
We'll, we'll get phone calls, why aren't you picking up this, why aren't you doing that? Well, exactly what you said here, to keep it fair amongst all people, and, uh, we aren't letting you not have it, it's just gonna cost you more if you wanna give us a call to pick up some of the stuff.
Correct.
So, if we, if we vote yes, we're not stopping like Monday, are we?
No, uh, implementation would take place prior to, um, the recycling coming in, so I would-
Until, yeah, until we figure out the recycling.
Right, to keep costs down and, and, you know, recycling's still gonna cost us, I mean, you know, still gonna cost us more money to recycle, but if we can reduce this service, then the cost won't be as high.
Actually, I have for-sale signs on the trucks ready. No, yeah, looking out a little bit, initially, we'd probably be looking at least the first of the year, for sure, before we'd have anything with recycling implemented. A long-term goal would, I'd like to see recycling implemented prior to spring two thousand and eighteen.
And then with that, Mr. Prowse, you're gonna also, like you said in your presentation, you're gonna add hours to the baler building, um, and then also add possibly more of the containers in the, the pickup spots, like where the leaves and the?
We would consider looking at all options that are available to us. Um, we did have some extended hours this past summer and spring, and from about five of, five, between five and six o'clock, only for about three weeks, we were busy. Other than that, you'd see one or two customers, and if you figure all the overhead costs that are associated, I don't know if it pays off, but it's something that we will do some more discussion on, um, but we are entertaining that possibility.
I know your roll-offs were pretty full this fall.
Yes.
And that leads to my next question about, and this will get directed at Mr. Zeroff. We had leaves in the street again this year, and we had a pickup time was supposed to be the first week in November, am I correct?
I believe so, yes.
How did that go?
Um, I had discussions with the chief and the manager of the street this morning. They had some sweepers out, and they had the, the Johnston out prior to this first week in November, picking up, uh, leaves. They did get calls, did do, uh, some of the leaves already, but obviously, this week, uh, it's snowy and probably not the best, uh, weather to, to pick up leaves. And that's one thing I also discussed with Mr. Prowse this afternoon, um, you know, if, if we're not gonna, you know, if, if we're gonna eliminate the rear load and pick up leaves, uh, maybe we will, I think we need to relook at our leaf pickup, how we're, how we're doing it, how we're gonna coordinate that with residences, um, you know, do we have a, a longer term where we go Oc- Oc- all October and November to pick up leaves? We have the truck out on call, uh, but, and that's one thing I think, between the street and the solid waste, we can increase that timeframe and provide, provide that service.
Because I, I do think there needs to be an adjustment, because we had a lot of leaves sitting in the streets, um, and then I don't know how many got frozen in the last week, which is gonna be a problem in the spring. And I, I would think it's probably a problem even for your, um, not so much a problem, but they're there in the way when you're picking up trash, the garbage cans, so, I mean, and then they get compacted, and it's harder for the street department to pull them out.
So they're, again, a, a service that you've just brought in the street in the, in the city.
I know.
Would pick it up, you know, uh, so those, I think we need more discussion on that. We can, you know, we, we have a, a back truck, we'd sort of like to work with the commission and residents on how we can, uh, continue that service or improve it, or, uh, in some regard.
I know, one more comment. So I know we have a lot of problems with branches in our grass bins, have we thought about putting a bin for branches?
I thought about it. Um, the problem we'd run into there is branches are so bulky, and if they aren't stacked in improperly layered, we won't get anything in the, into our roll-off. Two vehicles would dump in there with a pickup load each, and it would be plumb full. Um, the only way that would work is we'd have to chase around with a loader, front-end loader, and compact everything down probably two, three times a day, um, before we'd even haul them out.
And it, it is free for residents to haul trees out to the landfill?
Yes.
So.
And we do have bil- uh, boxes available at our baler building for trees, and we can maintain them on a daily basis because we're there.
Right.
For a regular basis.
And that's one thing, too, is, is maybe additional roll-off boxes at the baler, they don't have to go to the landfill, right? And we have a paved area if, if we can make that easier for residents to deliver some of these items, uh, and options.
Any other questions or comments from the Commissioners, from Mr. Prowse or Mrs. I guess the action that Mr. Prowse is looking for is a mission, uh, motion to approve or deny the elimination of the rear route in lieu of single-stream.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, to eliminate the rearload in lieu of single-stream recycling.
Commissioner Decker, or, excuse me, President Decker, um, you may want to include an implementation date, just so that everybody's clear if you want to move forward with that, or leave it up to, uh, the Public Works Department to communicate that to the public.
Well, I think we're gonna have to hear the single, the single-stream recycling before we can basically set a date on it, I think.
Okay. Yeah, my preference would be to see that eliminated once we start the recycling.
It will be bringing you more information on, or, or plan, uh, on recycling.
Sounds good.
We have a motion to eliminate in a second. Take a vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Friedrich? Mr. Friedrich?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Your motion is approved to eliminate the rearload with the implementation of single-stream.
Thank you, I'll be back with the recycling program.
Now you can get those for-sale signs back on.
We have nothing from building, planning, or building in codes. Commissioners, do you have anything for the public?
President Decker, I do have one planning. If I could.
Oh, okay, you have one planning, all right.
Just if you'll indulge me for one minute, I want to read an email to you publicly from Ricky Rourke, she's the program administrator at the Department of Commerce who deals with the Renaissance Zone. We submitted our Renaissance Zone program to them after we received all the updates, and this was her response. "I just completed the review of Dickinson's new development plan, and I really want to commend you on the work that you did. The plan looks absolutely great, is comprehensive, deliberate, and well-thought-out. I appreciate your efforts, it makes my job so much easier. On that note, occasionally, a community will request a sample development plan when they are drafting their own. With your permission, I'd love to use Dickinson's as the model. Please let me know what you think." So you guys were involved in obviously approving that Renaissance Zone plan, and the Planning and Zoning Commission was as well, and I just want you to know that it may be used as a model across the state of North Dakota.
I would like to say, Mr. Hadley and Mr. Josephson did a lot of hard work on that.
They did.
They did. And they were very receptive to any comments from the public, so, thank you, Mr. Kessel. Commissioners, anything for the public?
I just want to thank my students for showing up this evening. Hopefully, they enjoyed the meeting and found out a little more about what their city does for them and how these, how local government works, so.
Did they have a choice?
They did, actually. There might be a prize in it.
Anything else, Commissioners?
If not, if there's anyone in the audience that has an issue of city concern that is not on our agenda, please come forward, state your name, and let us know what your concern Seeing no one from the public has any concerns, which is always great, we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.